This conference will now be recorded.
It is now.
Yeah, we're good. I see it now. All right, so we're good to go and you want to call it's order and then you can post it to Corey?
All right, call our meeting to discuss the 2025 street and utility improvement project. It's all yours.
All right, do you have that? Oh, yeah, sorry. All right, wonderful. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. And Tony, I appreciate it. So tonight I got a PowerPoint to kind of walk you through my handout here. If you don't mind, Tony, I'll be advancing the next slide. So I see some familiar faces from February, kind of introduced myself and presented some of our initial assessment to the infrastructure, kind of queued up this idea of the 2025 street utility project. Made action on that formally in February, or May, excuse me, to order the engineer's report. And that is what you have found in front of you tonight. So when we reference a feasibility report or engineers' report, that document there is exactly what we're going to ultimately accept as a city. In draft form tonight, and as we've been over the past few months, you're preparing this, there's been some things that kind of have triggered and a recognition. We haven't done one of these in a while. It's new to me as a New York City engineer. And so I wanted to take a workshop opportunity, kind of walk you through the contents of this and then get into a little discussion, or at least things that we would, we would like to, to understand a little better here before we proceed with the next step. So I'll present the project, go over some costs, some bonding. We've got some information from the financial planner. The 429 is that special assessment process. We're going to spend a little bit of time talking about that. What are the steps that we have to follow for that? What's the policy currently state, some of those concerns with that? And then just kind of queue up and frame for you the next steps. Ultimately, when we've mentioned a 2025 project, we're talking about construction. So we're in the planning phases, the engineering phases to be under construction next year. That's what we're, that's what we're planning for. So and then here, as long as you need me tonight to answer any questions, so if you don't mind, Tony. So 2025 project area, this was an area that was a part of that, a kind of a February assessment. Okay, so I'll, I'll sort of guide you in this, in this bound document. Everything presented tonight is from this, and this is yours to take and, and understand better. But I'm going to pull up the high points and then kind of you'll walk you through it and I'll try to call a specific section. We're going to spend a ton of time in the appendix. So there's some large folded sheets at the back. That's where you'll be. And so this figure here is appendix A, literally the first one up. And so it's the, that's the colored map there. It's figure one is what we would call it. So 2025 project area, it's a four block total project area focusing on Ash and Broadway, starting that Trump Highway 30 and then working our way south to Forest Street. Those four blocks is kind of totality there, two blocks of Ash, two blocks of Broadway. Staying out of 30, we're aware and tracking the MidDOT Pet, Pet project here, anticipate 2027.
I believe it's 2026 or 2027.
Seven, six or seven. So we're staying out of the, the right of way there of MidDOT, but then working the full right of way then south from, from the south side of Trump Highway 30 to Forest Street. And then the peak is pretty literal here. We're, we're not going any further south than fourth, other than the intersection. And we're not doing any work on fourth or third, so just these four blocks. So as we work through this tonight, just kind of frame that this is our project area. Yeah, mind Tony? So then when we talk about a street and utility project, and this was a repeat from my discussion in February, it's a full reconstruction of everything. So the underground utilities, we would rebuild, sanitary water storm, all exist here in, in a, in a city residential street. Underdrain would be incorporated with that. And then a full reconstruction of the surface then, once you're done with utilities. So it's a, it's a full new pavement section, sand, aggregate base, bituminous, new, new curb and gutter, new sidewalk. We are going to propose at least that that's the direction that we're, we're trending is replace the sidewalk only on one side to kind of manage that cost and set some expectations for sidewalk improvements in areas that don't have any.
Is there one side now?
There, there Broadway actually has it on both sides. Ash has it on, on one side for the, for the school.
Yeah, so the, so the discussion, just to, to back up this, the, the discussion that we've been having as a staff and with Corey and, and things is that there is no current sidewalk policy within the city of New Richland. It's kind of always just been told to homeowners that if it's there in front of your house, if something happens, you have to replace it, right? But through this, since there's no official sidewalk policy and a lot of times homeowners don't check, they just remove it and don't replace it, say, or grass there, or they don't ask or it's gone. So if you go down Broadway, you'll see sidewalk and there's no sidewalk and there's sidewalk and there's no sidewalk. So our thought process behind this policy is if, if we go, you know, we put a, a four foot by six block sidewalk on two sides of the road, that's a lot of concrete, right? So if we go on just one side of the road, we potentially cost save for that road, right? We're still giving a path for everybody to walk on, on the road, right? So then the council could potentially look at for any other future street project or street improvement project that the council does a sidewalk policy for the community that says, and this is just an example, all north and south roads that the sidewalk is on the east side of the road, or all east and west roads, the sidewalks on the north side of the road. And that's what the policy is. From that point on, anytime there's an improvement, the new sidewalk goes in on that side of the road and that's what the, the policy is from there on out. So that's just the thought behind that scenario. So it's very easy to step out, cross the road, get on the sidewalk as opposed to having to have a sidewalk on either side of the road and cost money. The other thing behind that is that if you would take a road like Broadway that's extremely wide, you can narrow that road a little bit and have the sidewalk on the one side of the road as opposed to trying to maintain a super huge road and have sidewalks on both sides of the road.
So we'll, we'll continue to evaluate that. We're going to have some, you know, public engagement. We're going to, you know, get some feedback on this thought process. There is no current sidewalk policy, so it'd be something we would develop with this project. And then we're going to have that kind of same context when it comes to assessment policy too. Just this project's going to really bring that to light. And so I think it gives us a chance to kind of define that and, and then put it to place, you know, put it into effect right away and then lean on heavily as we continue to evaluate infrastructure needs. Cause there, there are roadways that don't have any sidewalks. So then what's, what's the direction going to be? Is it going to be continuing those sidewalks, sidewalks on sides, sidewalks on both sides? So I think there's some thoughtfulness to how we'd apply it here and then consistency applying it, you know, in the future.
What's a ballpark figure to say if we have just one sidewalk and then a ballpark figure if you have both sidewalks?
I can get that to you. I, I, I won't be able to get that to you tonight.
Not even just?
So, yeah, I, I, I don't want to. We're going to talk numbers and I promise you the numbers are going to be numbers we can, we can talk more about. But right now I would say the consensus is these projects are more expensive than you're going to expect. So any opportunity to cost save, I think we're going to be looking for that. But if you, I'd be happy to follow up with that, but I'd hate to, to, to hipshot it and miss it, so.
I think it's okay because sidewalks on both sides are crap. So at least if you just do one side and let the other people maybe even take them out and just let them be yards, might not be the worst.
Without getting into weeds, if I had what sidewalk on my property and you said you were going to take it out, I'd say, man, I want it because that's curb appeal. You sell those.
But it's your responsibility.
Potentially, yeah, the other, the other thing you could look, I mean, and we're getting way off top. The other, the other thing you could potentially look at is maybe if you go to that type of scenario, instead of it being the homeowner's complete expense, maybe there's a cost sharing benefit where the city takes on 50% of the cost sharing expense of the sidewalk with the homeowner as part of that policy. So I mean, there's all kinds of things to talk about. My suggestion to the council though is, is whatever we decide to do with this project, I would really like to see the council direct staff of some sort of sidewalk policy for the city so that it's, so it's the same going forward from here on out, just so that we have something in writing, so.
Perfect. So I think it's, it's valuable. I've bolded it for a reason, so thanks for that.
This doesn't have any effect on our budget, right?
This is all separate from the budget. This is, yeah, this is all, not this year.
Wow, yeah.
Yep. This will have an effect on the 2026 budget.
Interfrustration pavement markings where applicable. And then I wanted to put a note on private sewer and water replacements. So we'll not, we talked about this project, if you don't mind, Tony, I'll go to the next slide. So when we talk about projects, I'm going to fixate on the picture there in upper, upper right. We're talking about the improvement within the right of way space, a publicly kind of controlled space for, for purposes to serve the public, you know, roadway wise, utility wise. When we talk about a project like this, we're talking about replacing the utilities within that right of way. So that space, you know, to buy a pine sidewalk, if you want to frame it in your, you know, kind of in your mind that way. But through a project process like this, we have had success in building in opportunity for property owners to replace beyond the right of way from the private, you know, on the private side, from the right of way back into the home. And based on the condition of the sanitary sewer, some of the concerns we're aware of with how, you know, sewers backing up and just the performance of the system, we feel like this would be of value to incorporate it with the project. It's out of homeowner's request. It's 100% the homeowner's cost. It just gives them the means to capture a full improvement, new main from the street all the way into the home. And so that'd be something we'll continue to track in this process. We'll, we'll contractually acquire the contractor to do that work if requested. Homeowner has to sign, have to give us waiver to access their property, waiver to not appeal the assessment for this work. So it's a means that I can bring some, some expertise and some value to the project. But I'm just trying to kind of capture this opportunity. There's a nuisance, there's an inconvenience. But man, if you can have that full system replaced, there's a real value long-term. Things like roots and, and cracked surfaces, if you want to replace the right of way, you're not capturing a whole improvement. So wanted to kind of note that and something we could get in the weeks more on later. But as we go and we, we are more public with this project, I think that's a value that I perceive it would be hopefully well received. There's a cost of course, but again, it gives you that one time opportunity to get it set up for, for the future. So sanitary sewer, the 2023 was the first year we did sewer televising. We really fixated on this area, kind of in the south part of the city. You can know it there in the legend. This is also a repeat from my February update. But purple is the pipe we're most concerned about and we have purple south of Trump Highway 30. So when you look at that Broadway, the system there on the first two blocks, the system here drains south to north to 30 and then works its way from 30 westerly towards the wastewater treatment plant. Pretty logical in that way, but we're, we're focusing south of 30. And then we have, we have challenged sanitary sewer system piping in our project area. And so you can see the system is, is got concerns greater than our project. But right now we're just trying to balance the most critical with what we can afford in a time that we can start to, to chip away at this, so to speak. So Broadway's condition is, is in that, that most critical, holes in the pipe, soil visible. Those are just things that immediately trigger concern. It's all clay sewer here. So that's, that's why we kind of chose in this part of the system to, to start with.
Is choosing this part here, that's because getting that part repaired should help kind of help the area down here or not to help?
So Tony, if you don't mind, go to the next slide. So something that, that I'm, I'm super cognizant of as we discuss and I'm starting to become more acquainted with New Richland. I understand there's a flood concern here. To not put it any lighter than, than the way I presented that. But I want to, I want to be careful as we work through this process to ensure that we're, we're, we're rightsizing the improvement for the project area we're touching, but we're not over promising, over committing to areas that are outside our project. And so I put some thought into this. I was prepared to address this. And so ongoing flood control efforts, recognizing they're ongoing. We still have the hydrology study with Houston. I think the last council you updated, you're still meat on that. So that's obviously macro, right? That's, that's the whole city. So no conclusions yet from that, no understood improvements yet from that. Sanitary sewer televising, understanding the condition of our sewer. We just completed year two. We have three more years to go or at least two more years. And, and a pretty critical part of that, I guess, perceived flood risk area is still yet next year. The whole system along the creek here, we haven't addressed. And then we still have this very southeast and eastern part of the city that we haven't addressed. That's all queued up here for 2025. So not necessarily fair to say that we know what the condition of that system is yet until we, until we get that, that, that televising result. There is this thought that there's water coming in that's not sanitary sewer in this sewer. Not even thought, we know that, right? We know that in the influence of the plant, but we don't know as far as coming from, what type of water it is. So televising results of 25 are going to be important. We used to have some smoke testing, some investigation of what I understand to be this old kind of factory on the east side of Division. Near the ditch is the water reaching an elevation, getting into some pipe that wasn't properly abandoned. So long story longer, a lot of unknowns still with the flood. So I want to be careful. There's, there's greater flooding effects that are going to be still unresolved, even though we move forward this project. However, the reality that we have holes in the pipe on the sewer system on Broadway, we have services that are likely cracked and separated joints, will those cause an improvement? Most certainly. For that immediate area, we talk about ionized water, non-sewer water getting in the sanitary. There is no question in the project area, we're going to make an improvement, but greater, you know, we're, we're, we're still going to be, you know, still we're going to be required to do due diligence and, and there's further work to do to, to, you know, control the flooding. And I'm, you know, my understanding is there's, there's a lot of flow into the plant and the bypass of the plant is challenging because that's into the ditch system that's already being flooded. And so, you know, there seems to be this really difficulty of draining New Richland. And having good pipes doesn't solve that. But, but you know, when we talk about flood water entering the sewer system and inundating the plant, the better you can make that pipe so that water can't get in, there, that is an improvement, no question. So hopefully an answer to your question and we just have to be very careful how we message that. An improvement, yes, but it's not the, it's not the golden.
It's not the solution.
Exactly, right. Part of the solution, I would say, but it, but it doesn't mean that it's a un-Broadway, all your flooding water.
Correct.
It's a piece of the puzzle.
Piece of the puzzle, 100%. Yep. And it's a big puzzle.
Um, just back to, maybe I just go back to this because I wanted to ask, or ask you a question. On the, the two problem areas south of our project area there.
Yeah.
Just a note for you to make so that we can have a conversation about it later. Are those areas, do you think that we could maybe attack by sleeping in those spots?
Yeah, it's interesting. So one of the things kind of noted here, and I think that's important, is kind of capital planning grade or something for the council and I know Tony and staff have kind of recognized, but just a little, maybe a little bit more. And the san, the sanitary sewer televising is the fundamental step to that, more thorough analysis of your infrastructure. Broadway's a really great example. Broadway's an excellent road surface, been invested in, but the pipe underneath is just completely cracked. So just this idea of continuing to be mindful of, you know, making sure that the improvements are right for the overall system, the underground pipes, the surface, and, and to Tony's point, there is opportunity to more spot address really critical pipes like on Forest Street, uh, First Street, excuse me. We have some holes in the pipe, same condition of Broadway. That's, that's a concern. So do we go in and just address those spot areas? Similarly, on the south side of, of our project area here on Ash and Broadway, that's most certainly an option. There's a cost to that, you know, to go in there and just make that spot repair. But for imminent failure type things, it's definitely worth it. And, and certainly a mindfulness of what do we think is a reasonable frequency for us as a city to be able to do these projects? If there's a number of years in between and we don't think the pipe condition can get to that next, that next project, that's pretty responsible, I think, to go in and make some of these, these repairs. And maybe consideration of when you have a contractor in to do some of these repairs with a bigger project, even though they're small, that could be, you know, a, a measure of cost savings too. You're not bringing in a mole or. So things we should talk about though, as these sanitary sewer information comes in and we identify these critical things, we'll have to react to that in some way if we so choose.
Do you know off the top of your head of doing a sleeve project in an area just to get by till we can do the next step of it? How long does a sleeve usually last?
Yeah. So what's interesting is when, when you would ask me, what do I expect of a repair? I expect a repair to last the same length as I do a recon. I would say that repair, I would expect 60 years out of that repair. It's going to be limited though by the pipe that it's connected into for the repair. But when we line a pipe, that, that's the long, that liner is the long, is, is a long-term repair. We dig down and do a spot repair, remove that whole section of pipe and we sleeve onto the old pipe. That new section of pipe is the same material we're going to put in for the four blocks of this project. But again, you wouldn't expect that repair to fail, but it might fail right out of the connection. So those repairs are, are long-term. You're just capturing for the cost to do the work in that small area.
Plus then you're fixing one part of the irrigation.
You are, exactly. And then, you know, you're going to put back new, new road section, you're going to put back new pavement, but it's very specific, you know?
Rainwater and stuff flows north from the south of the town to, towards 30, correct?
It, it basically.
Now, if you're fixing things like ionized and all those intersections and stuff like that, could that make the south edge of town flood more because it's not taking the water away from town or from the south inch town? Do you understand that? It's now trying to go through what is crappy and it does somewhat. But if you plug all that so nothing gets into it, then could it back up into yards on the south edge of town?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it, it would be a responsible way to say that it can't. But you know, the, the intent ultimately is, especially for groundwater, right? That's going to find it, it's going to find a relief somewhere. And if it's getting into the sanitary sewer and stressing the rest of the system downstream at the plant, that's not a positive.
Correct.
It's going to find it. And so what's a little unclear yet right now is I would say, is this surface water? That's just, you know, my understanding is we're not really necessarily seeing surface flooding, but we're seeing a flooding of this, of this underground utility.
True.
So then to me, it's a question of well, how's that water getting in there? And, and there's this, I think, idea that there's some direct connection, direct discharge potentially into the sewer system. And so that to me is the more, you know, effective solution than it is just saying your, your pipe is water, tight surface water is coming.
The other nice, the other nice thing about the project, it'll, it will eliminate any sump pumps being discharged into our sewer for system for those blocks. I mean, they will not hook them back up. It'll be gone.
Do we know, do we know how many that we have in that area?
There shouldn't be any because there was all.
With the smoke tested?
But that doesn't mean that somebody disconnected them from the smoke testing and hooked them back up after smoke testing wasn't done. You know, it, it happens.
It does. And, and, and to Tony's point, that's not a, you know, oh, so sad, you're on your own now. We have provisions that include means of being able to discharge a sump pump into the system that is appropriate for that, not the sanitary sewer. That's in your appendix here. We kind of go into a little greater detail about that. I'll find out. It's appendix, it's actually a figure five, so it's in that same appendix A. Kind of gives you some, some context to that sump pump. When I reference that underdrain, that's a drain system underneath the curb and provides benefit to the new road section from a process standpoint. We're trying to pull that water out of that new road section, but then it's also a place to outlet that sump pump. So it gives you some, some kind of context to that. So if we're installing an underdrain, installing out a, a small section of pipe to get beyond the sidewalk to that edge of right of way so that sump pump can be discharged is a pretty affordable and a, and a means then for, for that, that property owner to have an option. It's not discharging on a sidewalk into the curb. It's actually going into a pipe system. That pipe system is underdrained, is connected to the storm sewer.
That option for them to do that, that would be solely on the homeowner to pay that cost or would that be a part of the whole stuff?
Yeah, I, I would say in my experience normally, that's a part of the project benefit. So as part of that storm sewer assessment, the underdrain is getting built in.
It's a whole improvement type.
Exactly right. It's a whole improvement type thing. We would typically install this in areas where there is a sump pump though. They're a little bit.
Coordination of when you're doing all the work, they say, yes, I want it done. You're going to help them.
Yeah, we'd help them, yep. Yeah. Give them a means to collect that. As a city, we want that. You know, we understand sump pumps are necessary for function at home. We'd like to as part of this improvement give them.
Plus it looks a lot better, can see the benefits just hanging.
100%.
Yeah.
Yeah. So and then the, the way that this setup works is they either can continue to discharge it over land into that top inlet at the top surface or they can trench it below. When you trench it below, you just have to be mindful that you're, you're aware of frost and freeze and stuff so that thing is operating. So we've had good luck with it, but our goal would be is most certainly get all those out of the sanitary here, if there are any. So then this is still in that, that same appendix A, it's figures three, three and four. I'm just going to go over these real briefly. So when we talk about, this is just a, a graphical representation of full street utility. So the sanitary is in green, water is in blue, storm sewers in orange. The yellow is the bituminous, the pink is the curb and the sidewalk. So just a very literal representation of our project area, a little bit more broken down and rightsized to the properties and location. And it gives you just that sense of, you know, what we're, what we're building and, and where. On Ash Street, the one thing to note is we've got some dimension leaders. We're widening the road a little bit to a 40-foot section. Some concerns about tightness with busing and parking. So it's a 37 and a half right now. Don't ask me why. But we would, we would go to a 40 and a 40 is a real, I think, just a real traditional roadway. If you think of it as a 12-foot driving lane and an eight-foot parking lane, that's a 20, that's 20 feet centered outside. We're providing two 20. So just a really dependable, you know, county roads, build them at 40 feet. So I feel like that's going to function really, really strongly. And then not.
Extending there by the schools where the grass are sitting right now is where they would take it, right?
Yeah.
On that side.
Yeah.
It's all a sidewalk, right?
Um, yeah, I missed some pink there. You're right. Yep. Little, little miscoloring. So no, that's on me. Yeah, it is. We, we would not take any sidewalk away from the school. That's a good observation, so. But, but then in areas where the, where the school ends, then that would be a grass boulevard. So I just missed that. I know exactly where you're talking there. And then otherwise we would connect driveways so that black kind of dash line, that's the right of way when I described that earlier. And then I'm aware of the parking lot improvements that the school made. So we would, we would rebuild those aprons. We'd have to do time or new curb, but then we'd obviously stay.
And bolden maybe this parking lot.
Yeah.
Oh, they got an agreement.
We're very aware of that and we would, we would just be in the concrete apron portion. It's pretty tough to tie to an apron, just ideal. Would never want to compromise curb drainage for that. So a couple of aprons are a worthwhile investment to get our curb just right, but we would stay out of the two minutes, so. So that's Ash Street. And then Broadway is the next one in the, in the document then. And a pretty consistent story here, full, full utility replacement like I've been describing to you. So we have sewer, the sanitary sewer, the water and the storm still on Broadway as well. One of the things I didn't know earlier, but this is all four inch water mains. So we would be replacing with, with the eight inch we're proposing. We could go to a six, but eight just for the cost and the, the timing, I would recommend we would consider an eight. So we're going to see some, some, some water improvements certainly for the services that we're directly connecting into. But then also as we, if, if then the potential, we extend this project to the, south end of town, we'll have that, that water flow. Four inches is not an accepted size main anymore for water distribution. So it's, it's certainly undersized for what today's standards would be. So Broadway, I shared with you earlier, that roadway is, is currently a, it's a, it's a 38, I think, today. So we would be actually narrowing this to a 36, just, you know, saving costs, mindfulness of the width. 36 is, is, I mean, plenty sufficient for parking on both sides of local road like this. So, you know, trying to be mindful of use and cost, if we're going to just, you know, build it better, better for the future. So some mindfulness that way, but 36 is what we're proposing face to face. And then a very literal application of that sidewalk one side already. So that's the west side sidewalk there you see in pink.
And it's still doing a sidewalk to the rest of the curb, correct?
It is, yeah. So, yep. So we call those catwalks or carriage walks. We, we won't remove those ever. It would just, you know, be a little lengthening of those by rights to, you know, get through the sidewalk that used to be there on the east side. But exactly right. We would still provide that connectivity to the, to the, you know, front door, home access. And then we're going a little further south on, on, south of Forest Street there on Broadway. There's some storm sewer that's right there. You see that cluster of orange and just feels like a disservice not to get that. So we just go a little bit past.
Yeah, we, we talked about it in our staff meetings with Corey and like we would literally be abandoning one set of storm sewer stuff in the project. And we just didn't think it would make sense to not replace that new.
Being that close to.
Right. So why would we not?
Yeah. So it, it, it makes a ton of sense to just get to the end of the rung, which is what we'd be doing there, so. And I, I think I shared it tonight, right, that the, the draft is literal. You're right. This is, this is all subject to change and input. And I'll share that process as we go, but this is just our, our first recommendation. Don't mind, Tony? So now we can get into the fun stuff here. So estimate project costs. So this is presented a little different than what's in the report, but when you get to appendix B, that's the next section up. It's a little tough to read, but you know, getting magnifying glass on it. We reiterate the cost in a big, bigger table in the, in the word section of the text section of the document. But this is our engineer's estimate. So I, I pulled the concluding kind of subtitling here. These numbers are exactly what's in this report. So I'm presenting the, what we, what we have at the current time. So Ash Street and Broadway, broken out the two blocks, so two blocks of Ash, two blocks of Broadway. When you look at the top, the subtotal and the 10%, we're totally in a construction estimate. What's it going to cost when we go off our bids from the contractor? Then we bring in our engineer and our administration. That reads the total project cost. And so then the, the two roadways collectively here on the left hand of the screen equal the total on the right. And so when, when we reference a project, we're talking about this in context as we move forward here. The 2.5 million is what we're saying is our total project cost. And I just do some cost per foot, just to give some association to how the different costs. Your roadway cost is always your highest cost. That's where the bulk of your price comes and you can see that in the numbers. So it just gives you some sense. So kind of generally we're around $1,300 per foot cost here too.
Is the roadway going to be concrete or?
It'll be bituminous.
And is it all the way across the street, not like the ones up here on Birch or Ask, wherever they just did? They only put, did the outsides?
Oh, yeah, that's a, that's a street. Oh, yeah, that's a, that's a street maintenance, yeah, that's a street maintenance, so that that's a different strategy. That's where you're just addressing the worst areas.
Whole new street.
This is full, yep, full street surface, yeah. So so the two point five then is what what we're, uh, what we're gonna kind of frame here as our project cost, if you don't mind Tony, I have to go to the next slide. So then when we, when we talk about them, you know, project cost, the two point five million, then we we really get into how's the city gonna afford this? Where are the different funding mechanisms gonna come into buckets, so to speak, to to pay for this improvement? And so, um, part of this is expected to be through a bond, through a debt service. And I can let Tony kind of share, but I'll just hand it off. And so at the top, uh, we have that two point five nine million, so a little bit of a roundy here of what that final number is gonna be. There's some underwriting costs and things when the bonding schedules get prepared. But then that two point five million project cost and then we have a fifteen and a twenty year. And I've provided those in a separate printout here, they're not in the bottom packet, they're separate. And and from there, I'll just kind of let Tony frame frame this discussion.
Yeah, so basically what you have is, you know, it's two options is a is a fifteen year and a twenty year bond. Um, currently, we have a hundred and thirty thousand dollar a year bond payment that's dropping off in twenty twenty six. Um, so, uh, our first bond payment on this project would be due twenty twenty six. So basically what you'd be looking at is two bond payments due in twenty twenty six, two significant bond payments due in twenty twenty six. Obviously, the first payment on this project and then the last payment on the the other bond payment.
But if we're paying right now up until twenty twenty six, it's just gonna kind of be a continuation of what we're doing?
Well, so also the way, the way that I, the way that I look at it and I've kind of talked to Eric about this, you know, we've been putting about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the street capital repairs every year. So my thought process is Eric doesn't get his hundred and fifty thousand dollars to maintain streets for twenty twenty six. Instead, we make a hundred and thirty thousand dollar bond payment, a hundred and fifty we would use for street repairs and maintenance. We make a second bond payment, then in twenty twenty seven, we go back to making our bond payment and then the street repairs. And it's just, the tax base really doesn't see a difference in anything other than the fact that now we're making a different bond payment to a different bond.
With doing that though, does that put us in a crippling spot where if something comes up, we have no money to repair elsewhere?
That's always one year.
But it's just one year, but in that year, if we don't have money?
Well, we we would still have money. I mean, we we wouldn't have twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars laying around to do something. I mean, if, if, I mean, we wouldn't have, we would not be able to mill and overlay, we would not be able to do that kind of stuff. It would have to be one of those things where we.
Just patching.
We'd patch it, we we, if we if we had a problem, we'd rip it up, put gravel down and it would sit that way for one year. And so we'd get some more funds available to, or in for like in front of my house for two or three years, so we get the ability to to get a.
The difference between fifteen, twenty, forty thousand dollars?
It's a loss. It's a loss. I do not think the city has the ability to to bond on a fifteen year site, it's gonna have to be a twenty.
So it could be twenty, okay.
Yeah.
I feel that that would be the.
The thing about it in the, so I I did spend some time talking with Jessica Day, uh, from Northland. And, um, unfortunately, with both the outlook on the care center. In twenty twenty one and twenty two, twenty two, twenty two, our bond rating decreased from a positive to an A minus and with a negative outlook. So our bond rating is not, it's not bad, but it's not great as it was. It's not as good as it was, so it does mean it costs us a little bit more borrowing. Um, but she said we're not in a bad position and she said, uh, she reviewed our audit from last year and she was happy with the way the care center turned around. And said, well, if you're happy with that, you should see this year, it's way better than last year. Things are turning around, things are better, we're we're, Bob has done a phenomenal job turning that place around and leveling that off. So our financial position has gotten much better. S and P was happy with our, what our city had done over the last year, so they're maintaining that rating, which is good, they didn't drop it, so that's a good thing. Uh, so.
For them to up it again, though?
I would, I I will, my personal first thought processes, until they see three years of no loss at the care center, they will not touch our rating. I don't think they will do anything with our rating until they see three years of ma- of maintaining of the care center or some positive for the care center because they're still concerned. Like when they, when they dropped our rating, I think the care center had maybe seventeen days of cash flow available for operations or something like that. So it it was definitely an issue at that time, so.
So we're not anywhere near that now.
Um, well, I don't know for sure, I haven't looked at the financials real close lately, um, but Bob's got it.
Yeah.
We're good, we're not nearly in the spot and the tips kind of work itself out or nails. But anyway, so we're looking at probably a twenty year bond, um, talked to Jessica, we have two options, we can go, uh, to negotiated bond or we can send it out to bid. It's kind of our our options. Um, she can't give us financial advice just because they're a finance company. Um, um, with our bond rating, I don't know if people are gonna be negotiating real hard to get our debt. Um, so, but, um, she did send me an engagement letter, which we'll talk about at the next meeting. Where they can help us with some stuff and if they, long story short, we sign an engagement letter with them, doesn't cost us anything. They end up doing stuff for them, then we will end up having to pay with them if at the time we cancel at any time, it won't cost. Um, we worked with Northland forever, they're great partners, they manage all of our debt, they do a great job. So that's kind of where we're at, but, um, this is gonna be an expensive project and it's gonna last a long time, it's gonna kind of sort of hurt, but, um, then it's gotta be done.
I feel like we're, if we keep putting things off.
It's gonna get worse.
The town, rest of town is gonna get worse and you can only patch and mill overlay so many things.
Doesn't fix itself a little.
It doesn't and who, when, with these estimates that you've given, is there been kind of like a cushion of overestimating a little bit because of element of surprise? Because, you know, water can do a lot of damage underneath that we have no idea that is, you know, done.
Yeah, yeah, I would say, you know, I'd say for the most, if you if you look back at our estimate, we have a ten percent contingency in there. So that's something that we would recommend to maintain and your financial advisor will recommend to, you know, finance costs, some contingency in there too. But when it comes to street utility project, it's a fair point, but I think for the most part, you just, you pretty much expect the worst.
Right.
You know, and and when you're going in with the intent to replace everything that's there, you can kind of manage that, you know, the 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 system could be worse than you expected maybe. But the fact is you're you're demolishing it and starting over, so that does help in some of that unpredictability. But a contingency is certainly recommended and and, you know, reconstructing, you know, parts and infrastructure, that's been a grown a long time, there's there's certainly gonna be unforeseen, but.
Fiber optics and telephones and all this too?
Yeah, so we coordinate with them, um, they're within your right of way by by permit, so they they have an obligation to to accommodate where necessary are improvements. Um, we we control that space and so where's our mindfulness, it's certainly not in there to just make impact, to have impact, but we'll we'll coordinate with them.
Has it been discussed, like say if, for instance, I remember when they brought mid or Midco came in with fiber, they said you could connect to it. Are they gonna have that just like with your storm sewer? If somebody wants to be connected to the internet at that timeframe, can they do it?
That's their own, that's their own.
Yeah, completely own, so.
I mean, can we bring that up so that people know that they could do that?
That's their own thing, I mean, that's that's their their company stuff, if they wanna do their company stuff, that's their company.
Yeah, but if it's, what I'm trying to say though is if there's, if it's easier and cheaper to be done when we're doing the street. Why wait until after the street is done and have homeowner pay for that then?
It's not because you still need to trench from your house to the line, which is in the right of way.
Yes, I know.
Are you saying, are you saying letting it, people know that they want to contact the company to have that done?
Maybe a little bit cheaper to be done when the road is done. Do you know what I'm saying?
I don't know where it's coming cheaper.
Well, the road is already dug up.
It doesn't matter, the line is on the side of them.
We don't really want the road.
You don't get close to them.
We don't want the lines in the road.
Yeah.
They're on the sidewalk?
They're on, yeah, they're on the boulevard.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's open and whole, plus then they're in the way of you guys the whole time too, if that's, yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I I've not heard of too much where a where a customer initiates because of a project, uh, an intent to improve, uh, communication or, uh, fiber infrastructure. But what you will often have is if the utility has been tracking a need to improve, they will ta- they'll capitalize an opportunity to coordinate that with the street project.
Also, Midco just, just redid all their stuff in town, but I can't imagine that they were gonna upgrade anything. Fucking solid, it's kind of on the way old, so.
I think the bottom line is it's it's a transparency that we're planning as a city and and, um, you know, just ensuring that people are informed. And then typically utility, if there's a a means to capitalize, they're pretty good at doing so.
I know with bonding this this, but is there any grants that we can be looking at for the state to help with this? Or with the smaller patches that of the sleeving that are out there?
Yeah, it it's a question I receive often and I would say, I would say it's not that there's no opportunity, it's just incredibly competitive. Um, and so, uh, I already did look at this project a little bit, kind of without us introducing myself and our firm and what we could bring as a service to the city. You know, I, uh, there's a couple programs that that provide opportunity, ones like a local road improvement program and there's some other means to capitalize on funding. And the long, the long story honestly on it is, is you need something a little unique, you need something to give you a competitive advantage. You need some freight to market, you need some, you know, some commerce, you need some, you know, regional impact. You need something beyond a a street utility project that every city has. And I would say right now, the way that we're framing this twenty twenty five project, it's not as if you can't try. Um, certainly want to support if that's a direction that the city would like to take, but it's in my opinion right now that the project isn't isn't competitive as it is.
It's a run of the mill.
Are there, are there greater opportunities with the flooding and all that? I would say, I hundred percent think so and 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 I've shared that with Tony and and I would be, you know, as this study goes through, if there's a value in having us review and and it may be a doubt of opportunities that way. I think that's your greater opportunity as a city, that starts to check some of those boxes.
I think our, I think our better time spent is on a Houston study and trying to put our green dollars and something to that, than it is.
What if they talk about one watershed, one plant, they think and see if there's anything available that way?
I I I I'm supportive with Corey's determination, I don't think this checks the boxes on any of those grant opportunities. This is a run of the mill, street repair complete, there's not enough, this this, there's not enough. There's just, there's too many other, we have a creek through town, we got other I and I issues, there's, there's, I mean, this Houston study has identified so many other contributing factors that this street project is not checking enough boxes for any type of of grant or flood stuff. This is a run of the mill, city funded, street improvement project, it's not gonna be a grand project.
I just threw the.
I I I'm sorry, yeah, I, no, no, and I I I I'm glad that you're, but I'm just saying that I just, I I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I just don't, I just don't think it checks the box.
I'm just looking at it as like Waldorf had a ton of street projects done, how, what kind of funding did they get for that grant wise? To be, to check all those boxes to get that, that was the only thing I'm thinking of.
Yeah, I mean, it is.
That was a little.
Was that a different?
That was quite a bit different than that was, that was, yeah, that was a, that was a significant.
There's no way to tie this into helping the flooding.
I mean, what?
I have a question and this could have been discussed like when you guys started working on this. Um, but why are we choosing to do this section when we haven't televised or went through the other sections first to decide whether or not there's other sections in town that are worse situation than this? Because if we're, we're hopeful that we can sign up on this new bond because our last payment is done here soon, what if next year when you televise, is it this section? Or whatever section you would be next, what if that's ten times worse and now we can't do anything because we are?
Of of all of the situations that we've had the issues with, this is where the problem is the most significant problem. This is where all of those, we hear the name, I said, like hundred and eighty or whatever those things all come to that problem. This is where our significant I and I problem exists. This is where all that problem is coming from.
This is the area, right at the corner down here where we would have to sit and pump.
Oh, yeah.
Because everything comes right there and if we can alleviate some of that pressure off of that.
And I, yeah, I get that for sure, I'm just saying there's there's parts of this town.
You went down yet when we went over in meetings how every section is budgeted for, was it four years? Because of insurance or something like that, so it's, I think what you're saying, it's like, it's just broken down.
The other, the other thing is that this is, this is like the oldest part of town, these are all newer parts of town. So systematically, these are the oldest parts that are gonna be your first. So that's kind of the why it was broken down that way. And that, and through, through our discussions, through staff discussions and working with, you worked with Ryan before through identification. It's basically these two sections of road and then First Street Southwest that are the the main concern problem areas of complete replacement. So those are the ones that need to be done the most.
Yeah, I saw that, uh, but are there sections that you guys haven't even gone through yet in town? Does determine if those are worse shaped than this?
There has not, there's not, there's not been any, there's not been any, so with with the, with these sections and this section, we've had. Shut offs break, underground breaks, line breaks, things like that, and all the other sections, none of that pre-done stuff. Usually that stuff kind of, kind of precursors major issues along the way. So that's kind of why that's leading to that area.
To speak to your point, didn't Balsam have some issues at one point, the end of Balsam down there?
We have any.
Shelley was saying something about there about a year ago.
No, but that's that last house.
That was a house, probably. Yeah, got you.
She's got, whenever there's been heavy flooding, we've always encouraged everyone to contact City Hall so that we can let Shell know. So she can go and investigate these areas to see if there's something going on that we need to investigate. And her and Eric and Brayden kind of sat down when we had these floodings to see where do we need to start as well, besides we, this being the oldest infrastructure.
Right, and all the stuff like out in the new subdivision, that's all, that's all plastic.
Plastic.
So that stuff's not gonna have the same problem, so that stuff should always go.
But it was related to the bomb though too, right?
No, that's all, that all goes, well, stormwater goes out.
Yeah, it was related to the bomb, that's.
Yeah, so the sewer doesn't mess up those two there, but yes, so basically, basically, the biggest problem with the I and I stuff is coming from this area. And the leachy from the system is coming from this area, so that's kind of where we need to start the process to get that kind of taken under control. There's not enough, Shell, Shell and Eric and them have not identified enough problem areas in any of the other parts of town. To really make a difference to those two areas, those two areas are the areas that just have to be taken care of, so.
And the, and the, it may be a different way to look at it in the like, the last figure of your bottom packet here. I'd maybe reframe what Tony just described there in the sense of, we already know enough conditionally of areas that are of greatest concern. And so to answer your point is, if we didn't do these four blocks, we could easily go over to First App and I could just redo this whole presentation for you on First Street. You know, and we could go further south of Broadway, so I think the point is, is conditionally, there's no worse infrastructure that you would say we wouldn't go after. That would be, you know, comparable to where we're going in these four blocks. These four blocks are neat just as much as all other blocks and so to to Tony's point, we gotta start somewhere and make some improvement. It feels logical, you start in the downstream of this problem system, this old system, and that's what we're doing. And so, um, you know, we we could do this project a couple of times over and and probably not work ourselves out of out of areas of concern. So we're just trying to fit, start and and start an area that that's defendable and then do the most we can for what we can.
I would really like to go down to the end of that.
Yeah, that, you know, if you, if you couldn't do it, you'd be like, man, I'd love to pick up third, you'd pick up fourth, you'd go the whole four blocks, but then we're talking, you know, three times this cost tonight. So that's, uh, that that's something we know we can't do, but we we can, we can try to start and that's really the mission, honestly.
Okay, yeah, no, I kind of, I feel like I came into this.
Yeah, you could, yeah, yeah, no, 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 no. And this is just.
This is not even like.
So, yeah.
The hope of this project is to beef up that, that, where all that stuff comes together to to just kind of fortify that, that problem area, you know? So.
For the four, the blocks, four blocks that we're doing on Ash, Ash isn't completely all connected, are they get, are?
Ash will be connected.
Connected all the way, so it's gonna be straight and it's not gonna be all.
I failed to point that out, but if you look at the Ash, uh, uh, layout that I love by seventeen, that color with the yellow and the pink, you'll notice the santeria sewer is is going and and connecting, uh, to Four Street there. So it ought to be a continuous north-south main.
I didn't pay attention close enough, but what's the size that's in there now and what's the size we're going?
Yeah, it's all eight inch VCP clay pipe, we'll go back eight inch PVC. An eight inch santeria sewer can take a lot of flow, especially if it's only taking santeria sewer flow, so, uh, that that would be our. There's no reason to to top size the santeria sewer, that 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 would provide the storm sewer. You know what, uh, I I don't have a good, twelve and fifteen, I think, is the sense of that and that that feels, that feels pretty right for for there to.
Both of them same size?
Uh, yeah, comparable, I think, I don't know if you put like, uh, numbers, I did put some numbers on there. So we've got a little bigger system as we get closer to the to the intersection itself, we got some twenty ones, some eighteen.
And that might help.
So.
Yeah, that storm in there now is twelve.
Twelve, yeah, there's, there's a, there's some twelve ladders are twelve and, um.
Broadway's fifteen and eighteen.
And that that feels, you know, pretty, it's not a huge drainage area, you know, when you're talking surface drainage, so streetwise and stuff. So we'll, we'll go through the final sizing and such, I haven't necessarily done that in detail yet, we haven't designed. So we'll, we'll go through the final sizing and such. I haven't necessarily done that detail yet. We haven't designed it yet, honestly. We're just, we're just concepting this thing yet and surprisingly, but, uh, but yeah, that's our, that's our first pass at it. I can't speak if that's a, a bigger sizing yet or not of assumption.
Having Ash and Broadway straight through going on that, so on fourth, will that put pressure on that street at all? Having it going as, will it try to force its way to go either direction?
That's not a question. That's a question for Corey.
Yeah, so I, I don't know if I fully understand the question entirely, but the.
So the question is, so right now fourth drains to the east and then down.
Sanitary sewer.
With the line going both directions, will that cause an issue or?
No, I don't believe so. If anything, it should get, it should add value, you know? There, it's not uncommon individually here to have a manhole that's got two outlets, you know, two, two downstream. So, uh, I'll take a look at the inverts and we can manipulate that to make sure the north-south invert's lower than the east invert or. We'll have to look at that in a little greater detail, but, um, I can't even recall if I'm showing that straight through. I am right now. So I don't anticipate. It should be nothing but a mountain there.
Because if it's going straight, this would pull out from here. Just the flow.
I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, I can, I can do that.
What do you mean? If it gets to be a problem area here, at least this stuff could go take fourth street and go to that.
If it.
Right? If it stays open.
If this gets blocked for some reason, what you're saying? It could.
Maybe.
Yeah, stopping.
We had a question.
Cause you hadn't thought of if you kept it off on one. Last, la- last night you had that question.
So last night it's, I didn't realize it was only, I didn't, I thought it was already going both parallel. And Tony had informed last night that no, it, all this street comes down here and then over to this manhole.
I was actually wondering what that process was.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to say as development goes and, you know, it doesn't, doesn't go to, you know, you'll look at it in the full extent. Maybe it was incremental more at that time segregated and just to provide an opportunity. But yes. Anytime you introduce bending and, and, and turning on a system that you're trying to drain and drain efficiently, that, that does have some detriment to it. So continuous flow that way, multiple outlets, I think we can see benefits from connecting for sure. Certainly like to, to maintain Ash.
Take stress off of everything.
Correct. Yeah, most efficiently getting it, you know, getting it, you know, collected and then passed on is definitely the intent.
One hundred D. Now, now also just a quick note. So that, that figures for two point five million. So that's if we pay the full project. That's not taking assessments out of the project. So we figured about half a million would be in assessments or so.
Yeah, we, we, uh, we, yeah, we've, we've only made some, some, you know, assuming.
So we assumed, we, we assumed roughly two million is about what the city's cost of the project would be roughly, guesstimate. So we figure the bond payment would be around a hundred and forty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand.
So it would be a little less than what you're.
So we're paying one thirty right now. The bond payment would be around one fifty. So we're gonna gain about twenty thousand dollars in bond payment. That's what my guesstimate is at the moment. But that's, now this is all correct.
And then I, actually the, the third page of that bond schedule, the very last page, there, there isn't a, a estimation to the special assessment value. It varies a little bit between the fifteen and the twenty. I ran just a quick math. It's above thirty percent, just to kind of frame it for you. When, after this next discussion, the, this made an assumption of thirty percent.
Yeah, so there's, that's your, that's what you're close to.
That's what you're close to, exactly. So very good segue. I appreciate that, Tony. So now we're gonna get into the special assessment. This is a lot of words. It's, it's verbatim out of the city assessment policy. So when you look in your bound document, appendix C, is the special assessment policy that the city has in place today. And, uh, the text that I just described to you here is the introduction and the general statement from that policy. Really what this means is the city has opportunity to assess benefiting properties, a portion of the project cost. And that portion is defined by the city, often guided by an assessment policy that's then applied to a project. Uh, but ultimately council has the authority to, to, to set what the assessment is. So we'll talk about, you know, what that, what that authority means. So, um, so special assessment, chapter four twenty-nine, if you don't mind, Tony. So that, that's a statute that, that dictates how to, a special assessment policy is enacted in the project procedure, ordering of the feasibility report, the hearings that I'm gonna talk about the schedule to come. Those are all very strict things that are required to make sure that a, assessment is legal and binding in this application. But then it kind of frames back to how do you apply the assessment? Well, it, it's best to do that by a policy. This city has a policy. It's from twenty to, two thousand and two, so, uh, has a bit of age on it. And this table here is from that policy. So that's, uh, literally the, the second page of it, page two in your binder. And it sort of derives on how these different improvements that are assessed. And kind of the resounding conclusion is that for reconstruction type project, which is a, a street utility reconstruction, fifty percent of the project cost is assessed to the property. And we just shared an assumption of thirty percent. Um, I would say in my opinion, fifty percent is representative of a policy back in the early two thousands when projects were half the cost as they are today. And so what you find is when you apply fifty percent assessment policy like this to the cost of improvements today, you find a, a, a assessment value that is, is larger than you would, you would expect and larger than you will likely be able to defend. So that's my, that's my opinion on it, if you don't mind, Tony. So we'll kind of just work through this, but kind of any adjacent properties, pretty literal here. Uh, these are properties that are adjacent to the project and that's how the, the assessment policy reads. That's how most assessments read. The one deviation could be in the storm sewer. The way that the policy reads is it's actually the benefiting drainage area. So when we talk about storm sewer and what that system is providing benefit to, it could be an area greater than just the adjacent property. So we'll have to kind of be mindful of that as we evaluate the applicability of our current policy. Uh, but for right now, for the framework of this discussion, the red are the adjacent properties. So when you take that improvement area, that previous figure, yellow and pink, you pop it on, the red properties are the ones that are adjacent. So.
Can we go back to what you just said earlier? You were talking, our fee schedule said fifty percent and you were saying thirty percent.
I, I, all I said was thirty percent in that, uh, we talked about a bond schedule that assumed, that assumed thirty.
Right, but I mean, if we still went fifty percent, wouldn't that have us having to borrow less money than if we went thirty percent?
It would, but an important piece to chapter four twenty-nine special assessments are that the idea of a special assessment is you're trying to capture an increase in value, increase a, 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 a benefit to a property that's adjacent to a project. So you're trying to capture the benefit. And so what I'm sharing is a fifty percent assessed cost of two and two and a half million, say a one and a quarter million over, uh, I can give you an exact, exact, I guess I don't have a number. Let's just say twenty properties. So you have one point two five million assessed over twenty properties. That, that, that cost of assessment, I think if you were to ask somebody to weigh in, is going to exceed your defendable benefit.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
So what, what I'm sharing with you is when, when we're looking at the application of the current city's assessment, I think, uh, we need to be really honest with as a city and we move forward in this process. You know, are we able to defend that benefit?
Change that fee schedule then, correct?
We're gonna have to change, we're gonna have to change assessment policy.
Excellent.
Yeah, exactly right. So then I think when we're talking numbers like thirty percents that are being assumed by Northland or pre, uh, adjacent other communities, thirty percent, twenty-five percent, you start to get a sense of what is maybe more applicable to that defensive benefit. And I would say right now that fifty percent is.
Well, just having fifty, you aren't getting as much benefit just because the cost expenses more, the value of your properties will go up more.
I think that's, that's the way to look at it. Yep, exactly right. So then if you don't mind, Tony. So then, um, you know, what we've, what we've, you know, at least done in kind of in, in a, in a draft sense, and this isn't in the packet, this isn't in the binder, um, and, and maybe purposely, but when, when you, when you do the fifty percent calculation over the benefiting area, um, you start to see on the right-hand side of the screen, numbers that, that are, are, I would say in excess of what would be, what would be typical. And I'll just, I'll just leave it at that.
What percentage is a fifteen thousand? There's a fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand, seven thousand.
There's three hundred fifteen, I think, and, and that's the low.
Yeah, I'd be screaming if I had to build fifteen thousand.
On a, on a small project with a small house, yeah.
Isn't there ones that are like forty-two? We're looking at this number here. I mean, you have some that are.
Well, like what, what's the school assessed at?
It's a high number.
Cause we have twenty-nine homes in one school with a giant apartment.
So the, the way that the assessment reads is it's, it's frontage. So we, we, we classify that as linear foot. It's linear foot. So when I say a benefiting property, then I'm focusing on the address of that property, the linear foot frontage of that property. And it's based on a fifty percent cost of that project per foot applied to that foot. So it, it gets to be a calculation there.
That's pretty aggressive for, is that, do you see that as a pretty aggressive for a time?
Yeah, I think, I think you'd, I would have a hard time standing at this podium and I think the city would be to stand behind, you know, uh, the, these, these numbers.
Do most towns do thirty or twenty?
You know, I think that's something that we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to decide. And that, and it's not something for me just to say a number. And it's certainly not for, you know, for, for.
We'll have to make that decision. My, my recommendation is, I don't think we're in a financial position to be ahead of the game and go way down to twenty. But I think that, you know, if I, if most, you know, if most cities are doing thirty, I think thirty we can live with. I think that's a rec, that's probably, I mean, if, if we do anything more than that, we're gonna have.
I think you're gonna have a lot of people coming in that are not gonna be happy, but.
Yeah. So I, I do, I do have a, I do have a meeting tomorrow with a whole bunch of other city administrators in Harmony. So I will ask them all what their certain policies are and get that information to you. I have eight or nine.
Where my home come?
Is that where you're from, Harmony? Have you been to Estelle's?
Yes.
That's where we're meeting at. So I'll ask them, I'll ask them, I'll kind of get a, a, a general. But I think, I think we should kind of just tentatively, I think council, council should tentatively plan to kind of be at that thirty percent assessment. Cause I think that's a good starting point to, to kind of be.
But doing that too for cus, or for residents, they will be able to assess their taxes for certain ye- year spans, correct? It's like, it's not just they have to pay it all in a year's time. It's, they can spread it over, what is it, like three and ten or three and five?
It's, it's typical you would match your bond schedule.
Okay.
Twenty, yeah.
That wouldn't be so terrible, but.
Give a year left on the other? I don't know. I'll have to go plus.
Must be, cause I think, I think the bond, two.
Sure.
Two years maybe? Do you think you have two years left? Does that sound right?
Could be.
So I think there's two years left on the bond payment instead of it.
I forgot about it. When they wouldn't let me pay it off, I just said, okay.
So I think that, you know, that's an important part of this, you know, just to inform tonight so that the council's most informed. But, but, you know, cost of project certainly a moment and then applying the policy as it currently is, 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 is another kind of critical takeaway. You can start to do a little bit of math, right? This is fifty percent. So we're not even having these numbers, right? At thirty percent. So you can start to kind of frame, that's still, that's still gonna be a challenge to me. But to Tony's point, that's the idea of a benefit, right? Is that there's a, there's a, there's a direct benefit to adjacent properties. And it's shared that costs of these projects are affordable to the city as a whole and affordable so that there can be some consistency to these projects, which we know our infrastructure needs. So it's, it's a balance. It's very much a balance. But, um, this feels, this feels, this feels, you know, not, not a, a good balance and, and we have to change that. So, but to answer your question, you know, what, what typically see, um, it, it, it varies. But I think, you know, twenty percent is captured what chapter four twenty-nine references is the minimum. And then, you know, Tony shared with you policy tonight, that's thirty. So you can kind of get your sense of it, um, I think with the range that we'll have to settle on. So then I'm, I'm almost done. Um, uh, so proposed project schedule, my, my whole, whole tonight with this schedule, and this is in your packet, uh, this is a, a more robust schedule in your, in the bound text of the, of the project, the PR. But tonight is a workshop. Um, really our next step is for me to formally present the PR, take the draft off. This is it. Um, council would accept that then, and then we order your improvement hearing. Improvement hearing is a, a notice meeting to the adjacent properties, the, the benefiting properties that we are, we are planning a project. And the improvement hearing is a required hearing. There's two that are required for chapters four twenty-nine. The first is improvement hearing. And that's really to set the project area, to let people know you're a part of a project, planned project, and you are anticipated to be assessed. That then, uh, after that hearing, council, he can hear concerns, comments from that. Then the council makes a formal motion, action to order the project, order the engineering of it. Uh, that would, right now, kind of, you know, be best around November for the project schedule. Uh, we would then move forward to, to design this project. We'd survey, we'd move forward and plan production, bring that back in spring of twenty-five to, to approve, uh, advertise, and then ultimately award to get in position for construction to start in the summer. Not overly concerned about the size of the project and the time for completion. We always frame Minnesota as we get the summer to build construction here. Uh, but the one thing to note is we obviously have some, some, uh, school affiliation on, on Ash Street and the necessity to have that built before school, ultimately the whole project ideally. But I think we would very much note that Asher needs to be complete. And then there is kind of an option here. We can either assess based on the project cost at the end of the project or there's the opportunity to do it at the consideration of bid, the, the, the award of the construction cost estimated still. You haven't bid it. So I've assumed the post-construction, I would say the, the kind of consensus is that's the most fair cause that's what you built and then you're assessing with. Um, it, the one risk is, is, is the, um, obviously then you don't know fully your assessment role yet cause there's that opportunity to potentially contest. And so there's a little risk there. But I think ultimately, it feels like in my experience, more of the summer, uh, uh, end of the summer assessment seems to be just a little bit more palatable, more representative, certainly what you build instead of still trying to estimate it in the spring. And then you have that assessment hearing. That's the second mandated hearing. That's noticed the same with improvement hearing. But that is when you're fixating on that dollar. You're sending the letter saying this is what you're being assessed. They have that hearing, that opportunity to come and voice, uh, their receptiveness of that assessment. And then the council makes that approval. Um, and we target that October as kind of our, uh, you know, kind of our end of that process because then the count, uh, the city has to record those assessments with the county. And that would be that end of, uh, October, that just November kind of depending on your county recorder functions. And then it's important to note that assessment then would be due in twenty twenty-six. So that would be your first year of that assessment payment, whatever term that assessment length is. And so that would be then, uh, when that cost would be, um, that the cost, cost would start to become a reality for those folks. So if you don't mind, Tony, then I kind of went through this quickly, but really breaking it back. The next step ultimately is to finalize the, the feasibility report, uh, approve that and then order the hearing. When we order a hearing, we have some requirements to notice for those. We have a mail-in requirement. We have a newspaper publishing twice. I support you in all of these. Uh, but when you look at these notice requirements, I, I just pulled an example from a community that I'm delivering a project for right now. But this letter is on the left-hand side of the screen. That's the mail notice. The paper noticing on, is on the lower right-hand side of the screen. It's an example. But there is a statement that's required in there. A reasonable estimate of the impact of the assessment will be available at the hearing. So I'm just kind of running, bringing this back full circle, that improvement hearing, whenever we time that, we'll want to make sure that we're comfortable with what that assessment prediction is. Um, and so just recognizing this question tonight, that's something we'll have to have more feedback on. No action tonight, workshop of course, but the improvement hearing is gonna be, uh, I think, important piece to how we evaluate the assessment moving forward. So I'd say that's the critical next step. Um, provided there's no other questions or content than anything else I presented tonight. But that's what I have to leave you with. So.
With that schedule that was up there, November fifth is one of the dates you have in there, which is election day.
Yeah, you're right. And I'm, I'm, we're not gonna do this, the night we're gonna be doing that night. That is the one optional piece of that schedule. So we can move that date whenever. I, I, I had a meeting with Tony, kind of framing up this workshop and I presented that we've had a lot of success in the neighborhood. I know maybe the other council member here tonight, uh, has some thoughts on transparency and just openness of a process. And that is the whole intent of this, is wanting you folks to be the most informed. That's the intent of the workshop. As we work through this process, the mandated hearings, the optional open houses, we're doing this with the framework of this is an improvement. There's a cost again. I, I don't want to undervalue or belittle that, but the opportunity to be present, to share things like some points. I want to improve my service all the way to my home. We, we find a lot of value in having those opportunities, not on election night. Uh, but we would, we would incorporate those neighborhood meetings. And if you look in the schedule in the, in the book, you'll see we have a, a, a neighborhood meeting before the improvement hearing. We have a neighborhood meeting in design. We have a neighborhood meeting before construction. Sometimes one person shows, sometimes twenty, but the value of having that opportunity, we, we feel is very, is very worthwhile. I support you in those, but this was just the one that's most, uh, most, uh, short-term. But we would, we would build that in.
You also, you also have in there starting project in May. So school would not be out yet. How is that gonna?
Yeah, don't anticipate it. Take, take that in every sense of the word. It, it's, it's so dependent. And when we get into the, the nuts and bolts of this, we'll figure that out. I can. We'll figure that out, I can contractually prescribe, school needs to be out of session before you do any road removals. Uh, the pavement shall be in place before school resumes session, so those, those kinda details I know matter in the successfulness of it all, but. Um, absolutely aware and, and support the city in getting that right, um, we haven't even met with them yet.
No, I know, it's just, I'm just thinking.
No, you're so right, and, and, and so, you know, um, we'll see, maybe there's some value starting Broadway before May, we'll see. One of the pieces I'll share with you, we can't control project costs too much as far as materials and, and contractor labor. The one thing that I can share is the one opportunity for cost savings is scheduling, so the more schedule flexibility you can provide, the better your price is gonna be. And I'll be a, I'll be a, I'll be a resource for that, of where I think we can have maximum flexibility, but not compromise service. And school is obviously a service you can't compromise, but we'll wanna be mindful of that, if we can open Broadway up sooner. Or we'll just, we'll continue to evaluate that, but we've noticed a, a, a bit of an offset of escalating prices by giving flexibility. Again, within a frame, but the more we can give, the better off we'll be.
Is it more cost-effective for them to do, like, for those people to come do all the sewer stuff all at the same time versus them doing one side and the. And then come back later, does that cost more for them to have to come back?
Mobilization.
Yeah, mobilizations are huge, so when, when, when we frame that, we, we obviously want them to come, and when they come to a project of this size, this isn't a huge project. It, but it, but it, it's gonna be a material enough project to gain interest, they're gonna wanna come and build the whole thing, and what we see is. They wanna, they wanna maximize the scope that they're doing, so they'll come and they'll do all the sanitary sewer, and they'll do all the water, and then all the storm. It seems ridiculous, but they'll dig the street three, four times to maintain that progression, and really what we wanna be able to do is, when they bring the utility crew, we wanna be able to maximize the utility work. When they bring the street crew, you know, do the street work, so hypothetical, let's say we could start Broadway in May, hypothetically, and then that crew finishes Broadway. And then they can go over to Ash Street after school's out, and then they do all the utilities, those are the kinda things you wanna be cognizant of, but you're a hundred percent right, we. We don't want them to avail, you know, come in and prescribe them to complete, and then they have to come back, that will add cost, and so if you need it, then you can defend it. But if you can avoid it, that's the best, and so those will be things we'll wanna frame, but, um, mobilization is, is a, is a place that. You can gain some efficiencies if you can avoid multiple.
On the timeframe for that holding the public information meeting, being that some city council members are being voted in, I would say let's hold it afterwards.
That, yeah, that, that could be, yeah, yeah, and, and we'll have to talk, like, this, I would say tonight, what I presented to you minus the election. Is the quickest this project could move forward, as far as the next steps for sure, so if we want to delay, that, that's acceptable. The one note I will share is that conduct survey, there's some strategy there, when that can be done, we would prefer that to be non-snow conditions. So as we kind of evaluate this schedule, um, you know, I think we have flexibility this fall, I'm true about that. If we can have opportunity to start the project design after the new year, but shortly after the new year, this project feels very successful. So between now and new year, I think we have all the flexibility in the world, minus the survey, but once January one comes, if we're not making action at order plans. We're just gonna have that bed, bid date slide out, and that's not the end of the world either, but then you just slide out into that window of construction and you get the game, so. Um, I'll be a resource and I'll kinda, you know, uh, share when I feel some concern, but right now, I think we have some flexibility to get this right. It's a, it's a project that hasn't happened in a while, and we, we wanna make sure we get off on the right foot, both in our comfort here and, and in the public, public side, so. We have a little action to do before we start making some decisions, but I wanted to lay out a schedule to give you some sense of the steps. Um, and just the timeframe it takes to deliver these transparently and, and thoughtfully, so you can do this a lot more condensed, no question, but. Um, you just start to sacrifice.
Good start.
Yeah, so I appreciate the opportunity tonight and.
Any other questions for Cory?
Buddy?
Um, if you're okay with it, let's kinda keep the schedule fluid at the moment, just because. Um, waiting on Joe Lewis to get back to possibly give us a presentation on the fourteenth about hydrology stuff.
Yeah.
And if that's the case, would you be okay if we just backed you or scheduled back one council meeting to the, to the second meeting in October?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Yep, hundred percent.
Then I'll just, you're okay with it, me and Cory just kinda?
And then, and the next one, the next one, like my goal of this workshop tonight, the next one, you're gonna be a little bored, right, when I present the P R, cause you just heard it. Uh, so the next meeting is not the one that, that's gonna matter, it is the night of the improvement hearing, that meeting, so if I back that up to. It'll be the earliest, it could be that it would be that last meeting in November.
Yeah.
Or, or could, or could carry into December, that'd be no problem, but that will be the one that matters, that improvement hearing is gonna be the one, um, cause you let everybody know you're having it, so. Cool, and I'm just fine with that.
Okay, I'll, well, I'll let you know for sure once I, once I know what's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I understand, did Eric, do you have anything, or?
You guys win, or? No good?
Not said there. Alright.
Anybody else have anything?
No, does anybody wanna? What, you're into motion?
Yeah, I can make motion to Golden, or, I guess you could ride us on the workshop next week.
Okay, I'm ready to close it out for the night, and we'll resume it the next time.